We're working on, I got an app. Ryan. Yes, we had Chad, um, the whole process. Not yet. It's the board. Alter is here. Is it such a complicated, that's really so complicated. Eight, three way to get to the goal, play as a land. Oh, we're gearing up for our town. Which I did, which I'm. Just said, hey, do you have a job? Great, great.
Amazing.
I said to him, I was like, it's minor in. Yeah, interesting. Your pipes are in the right direction. However, if I live there and I don't know what's going on, I'm getting this. Hey. How are you? Yeah. Right.
Forever.
Wait, what's up? Hi, Debbie. How are you? We're next to the river. He put his bag in.
All right. I don't smell it, probably. Airman tried to take up. No, I would be so much.
Who's wedding?
Uh, it was tied zero zero. We have a weird four o'clock game to end the series on a Monday. And it wasn't because of rain.
At least you will have one afternoon game a week.
Friday was on Apple Plus, I couldn't get it.
Hi, Bill. Thank you. Sorry, maybe you worried about that.
All right.
Okay.
All right. So, be my dog. Be stupid. Give me a break.
Why this? Why can't we? Yes. We can do a proclamation to recognize that are. Hi, Debbie. I don't think. Hi, we were just looking, Mark, we passed.
Tough work though, but we can.
About.
Every weekend.
Oh. Hey, Mark, it's awful.
Carrying fire. Do it during the week. That's fine.
Where are you guys, um? Over there's. So I've made a non. He was kidding.
Like the export.
I was not like.
Yeah, this is.
Oh, well.
Oh, yeah, no, export day. Would be like. Like.
Yeah, we were in the lead. It's awesome. They were pretty good.
Sure, Tony was. There's one chair.
And I went too, I was holding the baby, but I was like, that's pretty good.
Chair that you feel like you're falling.
We're getting new chairs.
Oh, okay, good.
They're taking orders, they should be here soon.
Yeah.
We won't be laying anymore. Yeah, I didn't sell it. Show the others.
They're trying to make an effort better.
Looks pretty good. Yeah, I don't like it.
They're working on it every day.
Yeah. These chairs are the worst ones.
One chair that, like, yeah.
Upstairs in the library, I always get, like, is on the floor, like, no, no, no.
Why, no, we have chairs that worked at once.
Yeah.
Like when you sit down and just.
It's like a president.
Right. Well, they bought, uh, seven point one acres for one million. I think it's to the right of, uh, Riley.
Did they buy that?
It's in the board agenda. Seven point something acres for one point three million. I think it's to the right.
Yeah, it is, because it's, um.
Doesn't, uh, Brower, Brower own the land of the right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the latest news.
It's, um, it's directly across from Amblewood.
Yes.
Yeah, so back in nineteen, I think, fill in a rabbit hole, come on, let's see. Back in nineteen eighty six, Jay Alvin Hobbie, man, that showed extending acre wood. But I think the idea with this leadership buying that property is they're going to make it actually acre wood and then. Although they kind of over. Amblewood, um, to let it. Which will help traffic.
Yes.
We offered to share different.
That's up in the air, I mean, I really don't know.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah. I, I really don't know. Oh, that's a positive thing in this township. How did that go over at the park? I don't got any more hair to lose if they do that.
All right, I'll wait one minute. In fact, it's harder to look at it. I think it is.
Why do you need a microphone?
Well, that's what you can do online.
Okay. All right, I'm going to call, uh, this May sixth meeting of the Patent Township Planning Commission order. Um, does anything, does anyone have anything to add to, uh, the posted meeting agenda? Okay.
Can I make a motion to approve the April first planning commission meeting minutes?
Okay, uh, do I have a second?
All second.
Okay, any comments? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of approving the April first minutes say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Ayes have it, and we will move to line item three, which is public comment. Does anyone from the public, either in person or on Zoom, uh, have anything that they would like to say on anything that is not posted on, uh, the meeting agenda?
See anyone?
Okay. Hearing none, we'll go to item four, which is, uh, the Decibel Partners Hotel Final Land Development Plan. Uh, Pentera Engineering on behalf of, uh, the Decibel Partners LP has submitted, uh, the Decibel Partners Hotel Final Land Development Plan. The plan proposes the development of Phase Two C of sixty point six eighth acres at, uh, the Ninty Valley Sports Center Master Plan under northern part of Tax Parcel. The site is located within, uh, the Planned Airport District.
Hey, just really quick, can we welcome back, uh?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say before we move on, um, um, I just want to welcome you Jenna to Patent Township.
Happy to be here, thank you for having me.
I didn't know this is a welcome back.
We could do now, or we could do it after.
Okay, well, uh, I, yeah, item five is actually the introduction, so, uh, we'll say hello and then.
Yeah.
We'll go through it formally for item five. Thank you, so, um, anyway, um, um, I guess we'll just wait to hear more on this. Is there anyone, uh, from Pentera that would like to say anything, uh, on behalf of this, uh, uh, Final Land Development Plan?
Oops.
Uh, yes, I'm not sure if Jenna had anything or not, or?
Uh, our outstanding comments are included in the agenda. Um, Amy has the land development plan up, Mark, if you'd run, run through some of main concepts.
Yeah, um, I guess if you could go back to one of the overall, the first, like, the record plan, I, I, it's just, uh.
You're asking a lot, I am.
Okay, well, that's, that's fine right there, I mean, that's, that's good enough right there. Um, yeah, the, the Ninty Valley Sports Center, the, um, Master Plan, we, we had worked on this back, you know, it's almost, almost, uh, ten years ago, and we started on the areas to the north, and that's all been developed, uh, with Champions Drive and the Sports Center, and then this Kingston Village duplexes were developed, and, um, this whole area is part of Phase Two is what is remaining and has been developed, and, um, now this is really the first part of this development in this area, and, um, it actually matches the Master Plan in that our Master Plan was a pretty picture, what was going to probably go there and how it's going to be laid out, uh, but we did have a hotel up in this corner of the, of the original Master Plan, and, uh, we also had road connections, ultimately a private road system going through here and here, and, um, and I said, that was a pretty picture, and now, like, um, the Decibel Partners has a hotel group interested in developing a hotel in that area, so, uh, we moved forward with this project, um, and what this is, is, uh, this is a ninety-six room long, long-term stay hotel, that's what the, the group that's looking at this in that area. Um, we're also proposing at this point in time, because of some of the services and access, uh, we must develop and construct this part of the roadway, because this entrance here is a ride-in, ride-out only, uh, access, because whenever we did the intersection improvements and they did the traffic study impact for the entire site, um, ultimately, they could not work with a full access, uh, entrance at this location, so if you have a ride-in, ride-out, um, I, we still wanted to get access, if you're coming from State College, you wouldn't be able to get into it, and you'd have to go turn around, so we, um, put that roadway in, along with the sanitary sewer service is down in this area of the, of the, of the, um, of the Sports Center Master Plan, and we're going to have to construct and, and bring the gravity sewer service up to there, so this is really the first part of development of this area, and, um, it's going to have, you know, some infrastructure costs with regards to that roadway and the sanitary sewer, but it's, you know, it'll start getting this area moving, we think, on there. Now, if you want to go to the, um, other larger plan, um.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good, uh, for now. Uh, basically, that the plan, uh, really is for this ninety-six room hotel, it is, like I said, a, uh, long-term stay hotel, uh, that's the, the, uh, group that is, um, looking at it or proposing the hotel, and, uh, what we have here is, we have a hundred and twelve parking spaces, hotels typically want circulation all around their, all around their facility, uh, but we do have a front drop-off area and we have the ADA spaces in front, and then we have circulation for the main parking all around in the back, and, um, uh, what we have also for access as you come into here is, we do have, it's more of a mountable curb in this area, so people aren't going over the curbs, uh, and it's like that, where people pretty much would be coming in this way, they can go out this way, or if they want to go back to town, they can go out that access there, uh, we got a, a planted meeting, media island here separating the hotel from the main, main, um, entrance drive in, and, um, it says, worked on the circulation, uh, basically for what the hotel was looking for, um, basically have, basically front and back, um, parking areas for that, um, and, uh, we also, sidewalk, which we'll zoom out, we have, uh, sidewalk construction, uh, I'll first talk about it with regards to the hotel, um, along the entrance drive, we have it on the one side of the, of the main entrance drive there, we do have sidewalk around the entire hotel, we have it out to Fox Hill Road, and then we have it up running along this side of Fox Hill Road at this point in time also, and then, um, we have sidewalk that'll run down along, um, Fox Hill Road and then turn and go down Bernal, it'll be along the perimeter of the, of the remaining site, and then, as each other phase is constructed, um, they'll be looking at putting in remaining sidewalk at least on one side of the road, so Master Plan showed an internal sidewalk on one side, but we don't know what's going to be going here yet, but as that does get developed, we'll complete the internal sidewalk connection throughout the site, uh, with those, with those sites. Um, if you want to go out to a further view here, I'll talk a little bit more about that. Yeah, uh, that, that one's great too, because with stormwater, um, like I said, we do have a sidewalk that is proposed the whole way down to where the, um, Kingston Village, uh, sidewalk is supposed to stand, I think they haven't built that one, Sherdy's posted for that sidewalk, and then it'll run the whole way up along here, um, and like I said, the internal parts, stormwater for the development, um, and this is pretty much what's shown on the Master Plan also, originally, we have two basins, um, in, in this area along Bernal Road, and, um, that, that pretty much, uh, matches the Master Plan, we'll also be utilizing some of the, the existing basin that was here at Kingston Village, um, and that was originally designed, and then, um, this access at Bernal Road, the, the entrance has already been built there too, um, whenever they did the road widening, we'll be tying into that, that is a full access, um, entrance there, and like I said, we don't know what's going to go here, but we tried to lay it out for a pad, the Master Plan had originally shown a restaurant there, um, right now, there's, um, nothing planned, and then there were separate, different, um, office, office warehouse uses in these areas, uh, we'll see as those get developed in there, um, and, um, you know, and the road connection, um, how that turns out in the future with the rest of the development that's going on, um, so it says, overall, that's what's going on, we have parking lot lighting, you know, throughout the site, we're also lighting, at this point in time, some of these intersections out here, because they're critical, um, with those sharp turns right now, um, and then, like I says, whenever, whenever other law is developed, they'll, they'll light the areas more in their area, but, uh, we do meet the ordinance for the lighting for the hotel, but we are lighting some of these other intersections at this point in time too, um, oh, let's see. Um, yeah, I mean, uh, for the most part, I think that was really what we, you know, what's being proposed there, like I says, tying into the existing access, trying to follow Master Plan is what was originally proposed, and, um, getting this theory of the, of the Master Plan started for development. Okay, um, any comments from the Planning Commission?
Questions? Is, are questions okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so, I, I noticed in some of the notes, in fact, from the transportation, this CRPA Transportation. That they recommended a shared use path, and, um, I wondered why you chose sidewalk instead of that, or is it there and I just didn't see it?
I didn't see, I didn't see that part of it with the shared use path on our comments, and I may, if I missed it, I apologize.
It was in the, um, recommendation, or a recommendation from the CRPA.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, I just asked that question anyway, whether it was in there or not, but I didn't see it.
Yeah, I mean, I think right now, unless the township has, you know, a Master Plan of using a shared use path, which is like, that's like a ten-foot batuminous pa, uh, path, I know definitely along here, like the other sidewalks, um, there are sidewalks along some of the other areas there, um, I'm not sure what the township's plans are for the sidewalks versus shared use paths, so.
So the comment from Mr. Tilka was to consider the placement of a shared use path along Fox Hill Road in lieu of the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
That would actually play nicely into some of our long-term planning, that would like to do with connections, if you want to put that path in.
Okay, well, we'll consider that, I'll look at that, I'll go back and look at it and see, um, on there, I know, um, yeah, from what I recall, just sidewalks have stuck into my mind, so.
Yeah, there, and there's a lot of bikers out that way, and I've just noticed how dangerous it is, so, um, let's see.
Especially with the expansion of Bernal Park.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, and doing the shared use path through toff trees now as well.
And this is probably more for you, I mean, more for my education, um, it said somewhere in there about, um, one acre parkland that wouldn't work out, so they, they were going to convert it to a fee and loo, I didn't understand that totally.
Parkland fee and loo?
Yeah.
Um, so I am very new to Patent Township, I can talk in general of, um, parkland fee and loo, so typically if there's land development plan or a subdivision plan, there is a mathematical equation that says, yes, this subdivision of fifteen single-family homes, um, would benefit from having a dedicated park space near that subdivision, in other instances, for, um, multifamily developments in downtown Coors, or maybe in an area where there is a park close by, having another park right there would not necessarily be detrimental, but nor beneficial, so there are options where depending on the type of development that's proposed, parkland fee and loo is a better option, um, or I know for, at least speaking for Ferguson, if there is a park nearby and the subdivision is abutting that park, adding on to it to make it larger, so those are just options that municipalities exercise, um, when they.
That's what I was wondering about the, the shared use path too, because in a way, that's like a vertical in a park, so.
Yeah, and we actually plan shared use paths as part of our park system, so they're taken care of by our Recreation Advisory Committee, so in this case, this is so close to Bernal Road Park that it doesn't make sense to necessarily have another park, so if we took the fee and loo, uh, from them, parkland fee and loo, we could apply that to possibly, you know, continuing the shared use path, if they do that on Fox Hill Road, or doing an improvement at Bernal Road.
But I, I don't think that, there's no parkland fee and loo required on this, this was a Planned Airport District Master Plan that had the open space.
Oh, it was a note in there, I.
There may have been some at the time for this duplex development that was already built.
Champions Drive.
I think there was some for that, but with regard to all this commercial development and that, there wasn't anything required, but it was, um, this whole site down to, down beyond the Ninty Valley Sports Center was looked as one Master Plan, and we went through a Master Plan, uh, process, we had four revisions to that, and then, what you do, you come in with the final plan of each one of those phases or sub-phases, and that's kind of where we're at now with this hotel on there.
Is there any, um, I know it's probably, since there's not a formal agreement with the hotel that you're working with or that they're working with, um, but is there any indication of what it would, what it would look like, or what it would, other than it's four stories, or?
Yeah, I, I mean, um, I've seen some elevations, I, I don't think they want to release any at the moment, um, I mean, my comments, it was, you know, any more hotels have a hotel look, there's, you know, architecturally, they all have similar looks now, this one seemed to have a little bit of a, a stylish look to some of the roofline of it more, but any more, I think they all have the similar materials now, um, so that's probably about all I can say at this point in time, so.
Generic cookie.
Yeah, but, uh, but this one did have some, it had a more interesting roofline and some things that it wasn't just a boxy-looking one with the, with those colors and materials that they use now.
So, so my, uh, my concerns are, are, are the same, um, uh, if, uh, Mr. Tilka with the CRPA is, is suggesting, um, the shared use path in lieu of the sidewalk, I would, I, I would strongly encourage that, um, because I think that would work out better for, for Patent Township, especially if I'm hearing what I'm hearing from, from staff. Um, as always, does staff have any current concerns, comments, or, or anything that we need to be made aware of?
Um, no concerns, but I will bring up that we discussed, um, possible traffic connection, we cannot require this, we can ask, but a possible, possible traffic connection to the Cradle Property, the Cradle Property, we had a traffic impact study, uh, scoping meeting with them, and Rob Watts, our traffic engineer, brought up the idea of, say that a traffic signal is warranted by the Cradle Property, if the two properties had a connection, you could have a central location for the traffic signal, which also helps with the, they only have a ride-in, ride-out on that one corner, so it would help with some of their internal traffic flow as well. I did reach out to Mr. Toretti and also the developer about that, and they've agreed to have a conversation, and that's all we can ask for, we can't hold up a plan, we can't make it a condition of a plan, we're simply asking them to have the conversation. They're obviously much further along than the folks that have the Cradle Property are, that we haven't seen a Master Plan for that yet, but, um, it helps to have the conversation now, just to see if it's maybe even a possibility.
Well, we appreciate you having the conversation, if you're willing.
Extension of Champion Drive?
No, this would be, not be the extension of Champion Drive, that's still being discussed with the Cradle Property, but this would be another connection sort of to the backside of their property, through the Cradle Property, so there would be a, again, a central location if there needs to be a traffic signal out there.
And then I just have one last question, um, there is a, um, is there, there's a rail to trails, or there's a trail out there that we've been looking at pushing through for a while, um, in this location, am I remembering that wrong, or?
By the filters, right, is it by the filters?
I do not know.
No, I don't think, nothing, nothing on this property that.
Uh, no, it's like across the street.
Nicole, do you know, she's on Zoom. We can't hear you.
Is it the Bellefonte Railroad?
No, so whatever goes out to Penn State.
There's something out that way, long-term.
Yeah, that was part of the longer-term discussion.
Is that by the old deer pens going up that way?
That's like the.
I'm just sort of remembering.
Yeah, there, there is.
Overviews.
There's something over there for sure.
Yeah, because there was an extension from Fox Hollow to where the Army Reserve is, they take right up to.
Right, that's exactly right, and people ride out there all the time.
And it's, it's that, if we can get them to, I don't know how far away it is or, or what, but if we can get that shared use path to connect into that, yeah, if we can do anything.
I think that's all Penn State property, though.
It's, it's somewhere, I, I just, even if we can get going that way in the right direction.
It, that might be a good, since we can't hear Nicole, because we're having technical difficulties, which totally blame on me, but, um, it might be a good conversation to have as we're looking at the Cradle Property as well, since it sounds like there's going to be some development out there long-term, so.
Because, because, because one thing that we all don't want to have happen is, uh, approve all these developments and then come back later and go, whoops, we forgot to connect all this path, so if we can, you know, at least carve out the areas to make that path sort of make sense, um, and make a, make a good bicycling, uh, everything, um, do you foresee any, you guys foresee at least, um, creation of jobs with this project, um, have you talked, I mean, I would talk to Amy about, uh, whether or not they would qualify for, um, maybe, uh, art funding, for turn lanes or anything like this?
Uh, that would be a good question for Marcella, the CRPA, to ask her.
Yeah. I can relay that over there.
So, just really quick, the, the.
Yeah.
I happen to be on the CRPA. So, just really quick, the, the, I happen to be on the CRP, the CRPA, and then from the CRPA, I'm also the CCMPO rep for them. So we were presented with a, with a plan for, that was developer-friendly, but that had to go through the township for the development of road access improvements. As long as there was jobs being created, it was supporting things like that. It looks like there may be something here, but you'll have to talk to planning.
Yeah, and I said, this is going to be the start of this area, I think, because you have to put a lot of this infrastructure up front with this one. But you have the hotel, but after that, you know, we'll see what goes in there, but yeah, that's interesting to know.
Yeah, it's, it was, it was one of those ones that blew me away, and I'll make a report on it at the end. But I have no more questions.
Okay, Jim? I really don't have many questions, other than complaining about the state roads and not being able to have a left turn in there coming from main part of State College. And having to go to Burnell and then wind up.
Yeah, that's, that was part whenever this was, and, and this entrance was put in. I mean, we, you're, you're kind of tied between the limit on this property and, and then also closeness to the intersection. And it, it really impacted, you know, what they could do on there. And they, they were aware of that whenever we did the improvements for Fox Hill Road, that they were aware that there were limitations at this entrance. Hopefully, like, the things ultimately get built out and that, and that I think it may be, may be easier and. Oops, better, better.
Connections to, you know.
To, to have, have for this hotel, and also, like you said, with the Cradle track, possibly, you know, interconnection.
I'm going to follow up on what my dear commissioner here just stated and redirect you to talk to Jenna and see if you guys do qualify for the, any of the ARC funding, because that, since that does go through PennDOT.
Yeah.
PennDOT might make changes and improve that.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Okay.
I don't make any promises. I only say ask. Ask for the money.
Yeah.
You know, see if we get the, if we get the federal transportation grant for, for that from that, but.
If you ask, the worst I can say is no.
Yeah, exactly. And then we're right back to staying with the problem. And then, can you ask my dark light?
Someone other than you asking.
On your lighting, the builder, I usually bring up lighting all the time.
Yep.
I'm an astronomy buff. But State College Area School, this is going to wreck my one spot I go to all the time.
You have to, you have to go up to Cherry Springs then, so.
Unfortunately, with the weather in central Pennsylvania, it's kind of like, a lot of times, it's a snap decision. Like, oh, it's clear enough, I'll go out.
Yeah.
You know, Cherry Springs is two hours away.
Yeah, I know, yep. But the good thing now, like with, like what we're doing for the light reduction with these LEDs now, you know, rather than having some lights turning off and on, they can all be dimmed to a different lower percentages now. And so that's kind of what we're, what we're doing, is dimming them down. So you have a little bit more control, very easier for non-business hours to do that, so.
We just want, you know, less light pollution.
Debbie?
No, I'm good.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, I just want to reiterate that I think it would be really beneficial to take a look at the shared use pass.
Yeah.
Moving forward, because even in the one letter I'm looking at, you know, it talks about trying to take into account the impervious coverage for the futuristic sidewalks internally. And I think that, you know, having said that, I think the goal is always to try to have the easiest connections, so.
Yeah, no, I run, I run that by my client regarding that. And, you know, especially set along Fox Hill Road, you know, that seems like that's the area that the township would benefit the most from that, so.
Yeah, I mean, because I know that this committee's talked about, you know, to try to get bike connectivity with, you know, so.
They'll hear you.
That will happen in 20100. Anyway, do I have a motion on the floor for this plan?
I will make the motion, and I'm going to just add the contingent that you look at doing the, the shared use bike, the shared use, I don't want to say bike path. Shared use path in lieu of the sidewalks. And to also talk with planning to see if you also qualify for any ARC funding.
Okay, and taking care of all the staff comments.
Yes.
Right, okay. Do I have a second? Okay, all those in favor of to explore the shared use path, talking with staff and taking into account all the staff comments, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing the elevations.
ASAP.
Okay.
I think the one gentleman on Zoom would like to say something, but I.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see him.
I don't know why this, yeah, it's on. Sina, can you help me?
Mr. Briggs, okay.
Um, if, if, oh, there we go.
There we go.
We can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I just have, I'm from Kingston Village, I'm just monitoring this for the future. Because I have a clarification question on the storm basins that are going to be put in. I guess they'll be put in along Burnell, what, that's before the construction of the hotel. Are they both going to drain into Kingston Village retention pond or?
Are the storm basins going to drill it, hold on. Are the storm basins going to drain into the basin at Kingston Village?
Yes, ultimately, it goes through there and then it'll go back out, yes. That was part, whenever it's built, it's the size, it was sized for that.
So for the gentleman's question, it has been taken into account that the storm water that's going into those two is not going to adversely impact running into the other retention pond.
Correct.
Correct.
It's been engineered for that.
It's been reviewed as part of the land development plan by our engineer. There is an issue, a known issue with the one stormwater basin out there now, which the county conservation district was just out and did an inspection, and they'll be issuing a letter about. So that basin that, and I think that might be what the gentleman might be referring to. The basin that's out at Kingston Village now does have some issues, and the conservation district was out, and they'll be out sending some comments and inspection report out, so hopefully that'll get corrected soon.
Okay, and that'll be something that staff takes care of?
Yes.
Okay.
And just, just some other background on it is, this basin was left as a sediment basin. It wasn't converted to stormwater, knowing that this was going to occur. And I think it's part of, once this ultimately occurs in these basins, then this is going to be converted to a final basin. Right now, it holds sediment, it holds water, but that's what it was intended to do until this was built. And then after that, then this is going to be converted to a regular basin. It's been, you know, the thing is, it's been several years, you know, it had to go that way. But, and it requires maintenance whenever it is a sediment basin, and so that's what our client's looking into.
I pulled up the bicycle and pedestrian plan and stuff, if you want to come up and take a quick look.
Okay.
It shows proposals. Sir, do you have any other questions besides the one that you asked? This is just the shared bike lanes.
Okay, thank you.
Fox Hollow among Burnell Road, so whether they plan on it.
Right here, right there.
Yep.
Okay. What's the, is that what the, the test of black, that's all there, okay.
That's proposed out in the future, so.
What site is that on?
It's the latest. It should be available there.
And I think it's also available on the CCMPO website.
Yeah, let me find the title of it. Patent Township Bicycle and Pedestrian Path Plan 2019 to 2024.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, well, now we can formally introduce Jenna, which is our next line item. So I just want to welcome you to the township. And I took a look through the packet that you included, and it was very good. And I don't have any questions. I just wanted to just kind of reiterate what we've talked about before, of trying to incorporate at every meeting, you know, something to enlighten us with our ongoing learning of the planning commission. But this was very well-done and very informative.
Jenna is going to do a PowerPoint presentation on that, so you're not just going to look at it and say it's informative. You're going to hear how informative it is.
Well, that's wonderful. I did.
All right, so we'll leave the packet here with Patent Township. So anytime there is a new planning commissioner, really, any ABC, it can be edited for that to be reused for new members. I would always pass that out to all new members. It's a lot to be walking into your first meeting, so we tried to boil it down to concise, easy-to-understand basics anyways. So the presentation today is going to be about local planning. There is a regional planning presentation. It may or may not involve Ted Lasso. That will be for another day, though. Today, we're going to stick with local, because that is what we are doing here today. And in fact, my boss may be joining us for the regional discussion, just for the comprehensive update. It's a big project, and we're going to need everyone's attention for a solid year and a half. But we're excited to get started here. All right, so CRPA, so I am the principal land use planner for CRPA. This agency was established in the 1960s. We provide regional planning services to all six municipalities that are in the center region, Half Moon, Patton, Ferguson, The Borough, College, and Harris. We provide the local planning services for Patton, Harris, and Half Moon as well. Essentially, this is land use planning, transportation planning, and sustainability. We have refuse and recycling in CRPA. And then most of our funding, it comes from the regional municipalities and Center County as well. So why is planning important? All right, so planning helps communities anticipate and address challenges, such as population growth, economic development, environmental conservation. So we want to make sure that we are using our resources efficiently. We're addressing community needs, and we're ensuring sustainable growth, always. So today is a lot about current planning, so also known as short-term planning, day-to-day planning. It's essentially focused on addressing the immediate development proposals that we just saw, regulatory compliance of those proposals, and land use issues within a relatively short timeframe. So it's really immediate focus, regulatory compliance, development review are the main aspects of current planning. So before we get diving in, we're going to start tippy-top here, which is Dillon's Rule. So important concepts with current planning. So Dillon's Rule, it's a legal doctrine. It limits the authority of local government to the powers expressly granted by state law. So under Dillon's Rule, municipalities in Pennsylvania, they only have those powers explicitly delegated to them by state legislator. So you will hear home rule thrown out. There are two municipalities in the center region that are home rule, that is Borough State College and Ferguson Township. Those municipalities, they've adopted their own charters. Adopted their own charters, and essentially grants them greater autonomy and flexibility in local governance. So essentially, they have broader authority to enact laws and regulations without seeking approval from state legislator. So Patent Township, we are a second-class township. So essentially, what that means for us, we can only do what the state says we can do. Home rule municipalities, they can do anything that the state doesn't expressly prohibit them to do. So it's a little bit of a nuance, really, for me, as I draft your ordinances, because I have been with home rule municipalities for my career. But I have my second-class township book that I am reading. So I will catch up. So where do we get our authority to plan? That is coming from the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. So this is a state law. It applies to all municipalities in this state, except Pittsburgh and Philly. They're a little bit special and different in that way. So take those cities out of the equation. The MPC ensures that planning powers in the state are uniform.
Yes, I know. I giggle about that, because, you know, there's two separate courts, there's three separate court systems in this state.
So regardless if it's, if it's like our township or the two home ones, the MPC is the overarching document.
All of it.
Regardless of.
Regardless, really.
Of any of that. There's no differences in terms of that document.
Yes, so it ensures that no matter where we are in the state, minus Pittsburgh and Philly, we're all playing by the same rules. And that was done a long time ago, really, for developers. So no matter where they are building, they relatively know the rules that they need to abide by. There are little nuances, depending on municipalities. For example, The Borough, planning staff has the ability to approve land development plans at Borough State College. Planning Commission provides that recommendation to staff. Staff reviews plans. It allows them to move through stuff faster. It gives planning staff at the time, great opportunity to be discussing with council land development plans, because council doesn't see them. So they really didn't know a lot of what was going on when the big development boom started happening, which is why you see the interactive land development plan map that I had to produce, because nobody knew what was going on, because it was at a planning commission staff level and trying to get that information out. So overall, we all follow the same process. There are some nuances, depending on what each municipality is comfortable with. For Ferguson, staff, we were able to approve minor alteration plans with no review by planning commission or board of supervisors. So it's really up to that, the elected governing body, to figure out what makes sense for them and what they're comfortable with having planning commission and/or staff doing, or if everything is going through the board of supervisors. So we got into that. We're all playing by the same rules. We're going to do the next one. So MPC and the center region. So the MPC enables and incentivizes municipalities to work together. And it's called multi-municipal planning. So the Center Regional Planning Commission, it's a multi-municipal planning agency. That's why there's one representative from each of the six municipalities and Penn State that sit on CRPC. The MPC only stipulates that the planning area is continuous and/or within the same school district. So as long as we're either A, touching, or B, school district, we can all be doing multi-municipal planning together. Yes, this, my friend here, did you say incentivize? Yes, the MPC actually incentivizes us to plan together as a region. So specific incentives include judicial relief, substantive liberty challenges, the ability to adopt joint zoning ordinances. So that's a fun one for, if you're familiar with the University Planned Zoning District, that is essentially a zoning district for Penn State-owned land, if the municipality signed off on it. So I know College and The Borough, they have a shared zoning district when it comes to university-owned properties. And then the ability to share uses is another great opportunity with this multi-municipal planning. So yes, municipalities, when we plan together, we can enter into these agreements. So for example, College Township, did you know that Patent Township and College Township have an intermunicipal agreement where they share multifamily and industrial uses? So essentially, the state says you need to provide for all uses within your municipality. So essentially, the state says you need to provide for all uses within your municipality. And if you are within the comprehensive plan with other municipalities, you can share those uses. And that is a lot of flexibility and power that planning together within the MPC, that gives us a lot of flexibility to provide for everything that we need here. So of course, there are conditions to be met. It's not just, yeah, you can do whatever you want, have fun. So you need to have that comprehensive plan, which we do, and we're updating soon. And then the municipalities, again, the continuous boundary. So in that instance, Patton Township, you cannot be sharing uses with Harris Township. You have to be touching in that example. All right, planning commissions. So what is a planning commission? It's a local government advisory board, and it is responsible for overseeing land use planning, regulation within that municipality. So it's appointed residents. They represent various interests within the community. I like my planning commissions to be as diverse as I can find them. Why? Because it's a lot of perspectives. It is a lot to juggle, but I think I get better results when I have different opinions on one commission. As long as we're all respectful, work together, understand we may have different perspectives, I think we get better outcomes with that. All right, so your role, as we just did not too long ago. We review subdivision land development plans. We ensure that they are in compliance with your zoning and SALDO ordinance, SALDO subdivision land development ordinance. We will work on draft amendments to zoning and SALDO ordinances and new ordinances. As we were discussing earlier, the attainable housing ordinance that Patton Township is going to be exploring here soon. And then really, it's just making those recommendations to the elected body. So the thing with making those recommendations, you need to make sure that they are based on facts. So for subdivision land development plans, you need to identify specific reasons why you would recommend approving and/or denying that plan. So if you're looking at a land development plan, it's for an ice cream shop, and you don't think an ice cream shop should be there. If it's complying with the ordinance, you have to approve it. I was about to say it's the end-all, be-all. It's a good thing to put in your head and be like, hmm, ice cream shops shouldn't be here, let's change that down the road. So it's unfortunate in that when you realize it, it's a little bit too late on that specific one. However, not all is lost. You can still look to make recommendations to the governing body to change that if it is that important, absolutely. So I love, for working at Ferguson, getting the modification waiver applications. It tells me as the planning director at the time, where are our issues with our ordinances? Are we getting a ton of waiver requests for X and modifications for Y? And how do, how can we fix that as a planning commission and staff so we don't have to go through these additional processes? Clearly, there's something wrong. We want to tweak it and fix it.
Can you give an example? That happened in Ferguson, maybe?
At Ferguson, we would have land development plans for very small, very simple things. And it was absolutely insane to have them go through a preliminary plan, then a final plan if it was just a... The biggest example I can think of was the State College Borough Water Authority. They have those little outhouses around the center region. Those full-fledged land development plan two submissions for a building that isn't going to be occupied by anyone at any point in time. So really, that process made us realize, okay, I think it was the Water Authority who submitted a modification to go through the process as a preliminary slash final plan. So it was just one time through. The board went so much further as to establish what is a minor land development plan. So identifying a threshold of, is the building going to be occupied? Is it going to require stormwater retention? So there were just different things that the board and Planning Commission were able to figure out of, yeah, this is something staff can handle, or Planning Commission recommending to staff, as opposed to two submissions, then go through all those costs.
That's a good example, thanks.
Yeah, so that was really our bread and butter, as I would put it. Because at the end of the day, I mean, it's good to have that public process, but you don't want it to be onerous either. All right, the other part, planning, community engagement. If you talk to a planner, first thing we're going to do is say engage the community. We need to have a meeting. We need to get people out and talk about that. So this is also part of your role. So ensuring there's plenty of opportunity to get that public input. And we will see that when we do the attainable housing ordinance. Because it is a new ordinance, we want to make sure that the community understands what it is, why you're doing it, and so they really understand all of the facts and figures that got us to, A, the ordinance that would work for Patton Township, and why it's so important and why the board wants it.
Just don't say "do places."
Yes.
Who wants it?
Hey, why are those ones that have like four called in California or eight, you know? We'll just call them those.
Multi.
Yeah. I'm very creative with my words. I found, yeah, that's true.
You just have to, unfortunately, I mean, I don't want to sound this way, but we have to explain the economic benefits of getting attainable housing into the area.
So people can serve you.
So people can serve you, so that people can work at Penn State and serve the other economic driver, you know, in this area. But yeah, there's, there's a, you know, so somebody's not driving all the way from Sotani.
Tyrone. Mill Hall. Mill Hall. I met somebody who was in a temporary assignment who had to stay in Mill Hall.
Yeah.
Because it was too expensive to stay in State College.
Yep.
Well, and that just, you know, that came up with the Waddle Road.
Right, exactly.
Waddle Road.
The radio station. The radio station.
Clear view, Waddle Road, yeah. 322 has a rush hour in the morning.
Yep.
And late afternoon coming from over the mountain, over seven mountains.
Yep.
Solid string of traffic.
So when are we getting that outer loop, inner loop in what?
They're dead now.
Beltway. Beltway.
All the loops are dead.
It was actually brought up at the MPO meeting.
That I asked about it? Yeah. Ancient history. It's coming back.
All right, and then to end this very short and brief presentation, public meetings. So let's, little quiz, how much do we all know about what the audience is permitted to do during public meetings? This is going to be rapid firing.
Okay, I'm ready, I'm ready.
Can the public attend the meeting?
Yes.
Absolutely. Can they speak during public comment?
Oh, I skipped it too soon. Give it away.
You're doing great. I would hope that they listen. Do they listen?
No, not at all, please. I will say, though, on the clear view one, I was really impressed at how, how everybody listened on that one. I was very impressed.
Yeah, and they must have because when it went to the Board of Supervisors, nobody showed up and made any comments or anything.
No, it's a good process. Yeah, they really, I think, and what Jenna said about community engagement, that's one of my big pushes. We did a lot of community engagement around that whole process, and I think that helped as well because we had information that, and we would send out postcards and letters and say, hey, this is coming up, just FYI. And by the time I got to the board, I think we had two residents here and that was it.
That's why, get it all out in the beginning. If you've done your job right as a planner, no one should be there for the public hearing against it. Or at least say they didn't know about it, maybe they show up against it. All right, can the public disrupt the meeting?
No.
I was going to ask a question.
Yeah.
What, is our speaking time three minutes, five minutes, four minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes? Okay.
State College has a countdown clock.
Can we get a countdown clock?
Yeah, they have, I think it buzzes.
It does.
Yeah, I low-key like that.
I mean, I don't think, I mean, we've had isolated situations where people have exceeded that, but some are three, some are five, so, okay.
Can the public tape record?
Yes.
Yes, they can. And can they videotape?
Yes, they can.
All right. Beautiful class. That is the end of my presentation. For local planning, I imagine that the next one is going to be more specifics, conditional uses, zoning hearing board, just special exception goes to the Board of Supervisors. And conditional uses, you know, again, for all, actually, special exceptions go to zoning hearing board, so that's wrong. But yeah, slowly, as we get through these, we will be having a lot more educational sessions, trying to tee it up with what we're anticipating you all will be seeing, so you're not caught off guard.
Perfect. I was just going to ask one question.
Yeah.
So from the fact that our state government, they legislate what we abide by. What are areas that you've seen in your time that you think would be worthwhile taking a look at possibly? Like, like when I meet with state legislators, what, what's one thing or two things that would be worthwhile mentioning to them?
Amy, I've been with home rule for a while.
So a couple of things that came out of our, we were at the Townships Conference in Hershey a couple of weeks ago.
Oh.
A couple of supervisors and I. And the problem that we have in the state is that the legislature tries to do one-size-fits-all. And one-size does not fit all, particularly when it comes to planning. They were talking about workforce housing regulations at the conference, and the executive director of the conference said, "The state's trying to say that you have to allow apartment buildings everywhere, just like strip clubs." Well, it's not really the same thing at all. And also, some places, we're trying to get workforce housing, and other places in the state that maybe are a little more rural, they don't have the same issues that we have. So giving us a little more flexibility and trusting that your local officials know how to do their jobs, right? Because a lot of times, these are knee-jerk reactions to something a legislator sees in their, in their district, and then they just think it's going on everywhere in the state. And I know the municipal league on the attainable housing side, they had reached out and said, "They're trying to take away your ability to have an attainable housing ordinance and to have attainable housing fee in lieu and regulations." And that doesn't work, you know, I wrote to the woman at the municipal league and said, you know, "In State College, this is our situation. Our teachers, our nurses, our, you know, police officers, people that work for municipalities can't afford to live where they're serving." Like, we have a significant issue. We have the fourth highest cost of living in the state of Pennsylvania. We're above Harrisburg in terms of cost of living. So this kind of one-size-fits-all doesn't work.
Got it. You've told me that, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I get on my soapbox.
Well, no, because I've told you this. Out of the 12 people that I work with at my grade level, myself and one other person are the only two people that teach in sixth grade with me that live in State College. Everyone else lives 25 to 45 minutes to 50 minutes away.
Yeah.
You're a good one.
Yeah.
Well, I let him stay with me, but anyway. Okay, anyone else have any other questions?
No, I had a couple of comments on the welcome packet. I thought it was really great. I really loved it, and I wished I had it when I came to this one. But I had a couple of things that I was thinking about. One is that I wondered if you could kind of give people an idea of how much of a time commitment it is because it doesn't really, I thought it was going to be a much bigger time commitment than it, than it really is. And just that people knew that it's, you know, what they need to do, you know, is obviously review the plans in advance and, you know, kind of be aware. I feel like maybe more people would be interested in participating, and you'd get that diversity that you're talking about.
I will follow back up with you in a year after all of our comprehensive plan meetings that we're about to have. But it does come down to the municipality.
Okay.
So for Patton Township, we only meet once a month. You have that standing work session if needed.
Yeah, we haven't had, I mean, I don't think I've been in any work session.
Yeah, so most municipalities I've worked in, it's always two meetings a month for an ABC, at least Planning Commission. And it's really because of the statutory nature of your role. We do have time limits on our land development plans, conditional uses, et cetera. So that's, I would say, the biggest time commitment is the elected body, followed by the Planning Commission, and then it kind of goes down from there. I always tell people, if they want to really get involved, go on zoning hearing board. It's my favorite board because they only meet when they have to.
Yeah.
That's where I started.
Yeah, that's great. It's great. And you learn a lot about how land use and zoning and just how it all interrelates.
And the only other thing was if there's either a link or if there's some kind of little map, I just think how much work gets done before the plan ever gets here. I mean, it's an amazing amount of work. I just looked through this particular one and how many different iterations it went through. And so I feel like when it comes here, you know, a lot of work has been done, but then also just what happens after? Just if there's some kind of a little map that you link to or something from this.
Yeah, we did a little chart just over the process. So I remember the Planning Commission at Ferguson, I'm like, Jenna, this plan was submitted six months ago, why haven't we seen it yet? It's like, well, there's about 30 pages of outstanding comments, and I'm not going to give you a plan to review with that many outstanding comments.
Right.
So this has gone back and forth between staff and the engineer five times before you see anything.
I just think it's, I just think it's such an eye-opening part of this process that it's worth mentioning how much work goes into it.
Yeah, and every place is different. I know some municipalities, they really stick to that 90-day requirement. So once it's submitted, if there are 30 pages of outstanding comments, it's going to Planning Commission, and they are recommending denial. So it really just depends.
Clock started, kickback. Clock started, kickback.
Yep.
Yep.
This was very helpful.
Yeah.
The new commissioner, it was very helpful, I think. I was like, how can I put this in my binder? How can I get taught? No, but it was really good.
Good. And there are a bunch of links that are included in there. They're all on the DCD website, but if you need access or where to look, let me know. We can get that to you as well, especially the comprehensive plan one, since we're going to start that. I think I've said comprehensive plan enough times for Mike.
I know. So I have a question.
Yes.
Are, maybe this is a question for our elected officials, but are we good now? Because I know Mike's going to ask at the next meeting that I'm at.
Yeah, so what I told Mike, Mike sent me an email about that and asked if we were going to rescind the local planning withdrawal ordinance. And all signs point to yes, we probably will make that recommendation to the board. I just want to give it a month's time, just to make sure everything's all smooth sailing and then, yep.
Unless I get an email from you screaming otherwise, I will just say, all, all signs currently point to yes.
Yeah, we're ecstatic to have Jenna on board. We're ecstatic for Jenna and Mike that their staff is now finally complete as of May 20th.
Yeah.
It's, I, people thought I was against local planning when we made this whole recommendation to pull out, and I was just, I wasn't against local planning, I just had to pay for it and have a way to have a planner. So I'm ecstatic when the COG Local Planning Agency is strong again.
And I look forward to seeing you at the other three meetings that I'm at.
Okay. Fair enough.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, I'm going to just go through other business, and then if anyone has any reports to give from other meetings, we'll...
Mr. Bill.
We'll go through that. Because I know you had something that you wanted to mention, and I had water.
I think I've got like 12 minutes of presentation, it feels like.
What?
Okay.
No.
All right, so line item seven, well, we have nothing for six. There's nothing to report on any pending items. In other business, the Board of Supervisors approved the plan for the goodwill on April 10th. The Board of Supervisors on April 24th approved the plan for the windswept farms and the temporary permit and the noise waiver for the acres fundraiser. So having... So, having said that, do you wanna go over notes from your meeting?
I'll do it real quick. I've got a detailed group of notes for the CCMPO that I will actually just forward to Amy and have Amy send it.
Oh, that's perfect.
So, you can...
Anything fascinating?
Um, yeah, there's some stuff, mainly the ARC stuff, which I was emailing you while I was actually in that meeting. And then, the final thing of note, at the CCRP meeting, we have two municipalities that have gone through full legal review of their sign ordinances, which means, I'm sure we have something to base ours off of now.
Yes.
We'll steal it.
Yep, yeah, that's next on our, our staff-level work plan.
And it sounds like, it sounds like they've, they've adopted the basic ones that I'm used to out in the western, where, the western world, where, you know, nothing can be in the right-of-way, shared-use right-of-way, and we'll see if the other stuff that they seem to have on regulating signs on people's property will go through.
Okay.
It's all fascinating, but, you know, that's hours of legal theory, and I'm not gonna get into it.
And just one additional note, we will be scheduling a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission in July to begin working on the attainable housing ordinance. So, I'll be sending out a doodle poll to everybody to try to identify a time or two that works for the group, so that we can get this scheduled.
And we can join remotely if we need to.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we'll make sure there's remote access, 'cause I know that's heavy vacation season, travel season.
Anything else before we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
That's great.
Thank you, thank you.
Jenna, thank you. Yes, thank you. [inaudible].
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 [inaudible].